Are we good back there, Joe? All right. All right, good evening. I will now call to order the Monday, July 7th, 2025 Town Council Meeting. If you would please stand, we have a special group with us this evening, the Boy Scout Troop 69. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you guys would like to come up here, and we'll wait for you guys to get up here and start the pledge. Scoot together, scoot way together, scoot way together. Scoot way together. All right, thank you very much. All right. First up on the agenda, we have a special presentation from Mayor Stare.
Good evening, everyone, and it is great to see such support for our Boy Scouts. So, thank you all for coming, and I really appreciate that. So, you may have heard back in May about the Indianapolis 500. And there's a guy who was born in Spain who won the Indianapolis 500. But I think what a lot of people didn't know back then is that he lives in Zionsville now. And I don't know about you, but my rule of thumb has always been if somebody lives here for six months, we claim him as a Hoosier. And in this case, he's lived here for six months, so he's not only a Hoosier, he's from Zionsville, the first person from Zionsville to win the Indy 500. Now, as you all know, our Brick Street is very important to us here, just like the bricks over at that racetrack there on the west side. So, what we've done is we've taken a brick from our original Main Street. This is a historic brick that is 150 years old, and it is now engraved saying, "Zionsville celebrates the Indy 500 champion Alex Palau, 2025." But that's not all. When we called Alex and asked if he wanted to come in and have this presentation tonight, he not only said yes, he enthusiastically said yes. And he brought his lovely wife Esther here as well, and we appreciate her coming here. And we appreciate his interest in being here, and I just have a quick proclamation to read. Now, this has a lot of whereas's in it, and I'll skip some of the whereas's, but here's what it says. The Indianapolis Motor Speedway opened in 1909 and hosted the first Indianapolis 500 mile auto race in 2011. And 76 individual drivers have won the race in that time. And the Chip Ganassi Racing Team was established in 1990 and has won the Indianapolis 500 Mile Race six times since 2000, most recently in 2025. The Ganassi team hired Zionsville resident Alex Palau as a driver in 2021, and together they have won the Indy Car Series Championship in 2021, 2023, and 2024. It doesn't say this, but they're on their way to maybe winning it again this year too, having won six of the first 10 races of the season. I'm sorry, I just have a little more to go here. Whereas, Alex Palau led the last 14 laps and was the winner of the 2025 Indy 500 with an average speed of 168.883 miles per hour for his first victory in the signature race in five starts and his first win ever on an oval track. And whereas with his wife, Alex Palau became the first native of Spain to win the Indianapolis 500. And Alex consistently recognized the efforts of the Ganassi racing crew while highlighting their dedication and impact on his success on the track. And Alex Palau has been a role model in our community and on the Indy car racing circuit by consistently displaying the attributes of integrity, sportsmanship, and excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Zionsville Mayor John Stare, proclaim July 7th, 2025 as Alex Palau Day in recognition of his extraordinary achievements and positive impact on our state and our community. And I urge all residents to join me in celebrating and honoring Alex for his unselfishness, his accomplishments and contributions to the racing community and for being a positive ambassador for our town. Ladies and gentlemen, Alex Palau.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I have no words, honestly. When they told me that you guys were going to celebrate my Indy 500, I was like, yeah, let's do it. I'm living in Zionsville now, so it'll be fun. But I expected just a picture and maybe, I don't know, something else, and that's it. But I didn't expect people, I didn't expect all of this. So, thank you for preparing this for me, for our team, for my family. It's truly special. Thank you to all the fans and everybody that has made it here today for me. But it feels amazing, feels more than a dream. I never thought that I would be in the position I am today, and I couldn't be happier. So, thank you for the break, thank you for this day. It's truly, truly special. And it's also, today actually is the 10th anniversary with my wife together. So, we didn't plan this. We did not plan this, but thank you for choosing this day because it's, yeah, here's the present, see? So, thank you so much, thank you, guys. Thank you to everybody in Zionsville.
And we'll plan to do all this again next year. Okay, here you go, congratulations, thank you again. Alex is going to head outside and sign a few more autographs. In the meantime, we're going to move on with the business of the town. And the next thing we have is swearing in four firefighters. And I know that we have a good crowd for that as well. And so, with that in mind, I'd like to call up the first to be sworn in tonight. That would be Tyler Hess.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Mr. Mayor. If I could say a few words as we get ready for the swearing in. Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stare, I'm extremely proud to be before you this evening for the swearing in of four new firefighters for our fire department. These four firefighters are filling current vacancies within the department, and we are excited to have them join the ranks of the Zionsville firefighters, leaving us only 11 full-time vacancies. They have recently completed 22 weeks of a joint academy with the Pike Township Fire Department, where we did joint training and they obtained their Emergency Medical Service and firefighter certifications. At the conclusion of the swearing in, I would ask that Deputy Chief Frost to come forward and present a gift on behalf of the fire department executive team to the four firefighters. And Mayor Stare, as I turn it over to you, I'd like to tell you a little bit about those folks coming up. This is Tyler Hess, and if his wife Daisy would please come forward, stand with him as he's a minister of the oath of office, and as soon as they're finished, you may pin the badge on. Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry for jumping in front of you in the line, I didn't mean to do that. But this is a great day, and I always appreciate the support that our firefighters have when they come in here to be sworn in. So, this is a wonderful opportunity for us, and I hope you feel that way too. So, I would ask you, Tyler, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tyler Hess. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Indiana. And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana. I will faithfully. Honestly. And impartially. Discharge all my official duties. In the position of firefighter. For the town of Zionsville. Regardless of the race. Creed. Color. Religion. Sex. Or national origin. Of the persons I serve. So, help me God. Congratulations, Tyler.
The next firefighter, I think you have.
The next is Samuel Hippel.
And he'll be pinned this evening by his girlfriend, Rachel Berry.
No pinning yet. I, Samuel Hippel. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Indiana. And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana. I will faithfully. Honestly. And impartially. Discharge all my official duties. In the position of firefighter. For the town of Zionsville. Regardless of the race. Creed. Color. Religion. Sex. Or national origin. Of the persons I serve. So, help me God. Congratulations.
Abijah Jones will be sworn in, excuse me, will be pinned by his mother, Sandra Jones.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Abijah Jones. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Indiana. And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana. I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge all my official duties in the position of firefighter. For the town of Zionsville. Regardless of the race. Creed. Color. Religion. Sex. Or national origin. Of the persons I serve. So, help me God. Congratulations.
And finally, Daniel Quick will be pinned by his wife, Abby Quick.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Quick. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Indiana. And the ordinances. Of the town of Zionsville, Indiana. I will faithfully. Honestly. And impartially. Discharge all my official duties. In the position of firefighter. For the town of Zionsville. Regardless of the race. Creed. Color. Religion. Sex. Or national origin. Of the persons I serve. So, help me God. Congratulations. If we could have all four firefighters up front for our final presentation.
Okay, gentlemen, if you would give me your attention. We started this tradition a while back, and this is something that the executive team has put together that we like to raise awareness to how important you are to all of us and to the town. Specifically, we'd like to make sure that you realize that you are now part of our history. And you have this opportunity now to write what your legacy is going to be, find out what your story is going to be as firefighters, paramedics, officers, whatever path you take in the fire service for the town. You choose to live that the way that you want, you're the author of it, but people will identify you by how you write that story. So, you probably already know after recruit school, you will develop nicknames, you'll develop a reputation, and it's incumbent upon you to define what that's going to be. Moving forward, we would like for you to receive a couple different things from us. The first is a medal with St. Florian on it and your unit number. Regardless of what your religious affiliation is, we would ask that when you wear this medal, when you feel it upon your chest, let it serve as a reminder that people are counting on you to do your job, whether it's your citizens in the community that you're serving, your family to get home, your shiftmates to make sure that you watch their back, and to watch each other's back. So, we'd like you to wear this as a reminder and constantly let every time you notice it or feel it, know that that is a higher power watching out for you, reminding you that you have a responsibility to everyone around you. That's one. The other is, as part of writing your legacy, we would like for you to take up roots here, work your career here, and have time where you will put this item on your shelf at home and let it serve as a reminder that every day you're writing your story. We would like to present each of you with a retirement bottle that is to not open until on or after June 6th, 2045. Believe it or not, that's not that long away. You will look back, and it will be shocking to you with a blink of an eye that time has passed in. But put this in a prominent place at home, in all seriousness. This is going to be an opportunity for you someday to open this bottle, toast it with your shiftmates, your recruit mates, and the people that you've worked with through the years to tell your story. That legacy that you're writing, that you're leaving with the way you come to work every day, put this in a place where you'll remember that you are writing your legacy every time you show up to work. You will have difficult days. There will be hard days, there will be times where you lean on other people, and other people will lean on you. But it is a reminder that you are serving a calling that you received, and you answered that call. So, we'd like you to accept these on our behalf and know that every day you're working toward that final joy that you can share with each other. Thank you.
Mayor Stare, Chief Engorder, certainly appreciate that. Thank you to the fire department, and congratulations to you four. Certainly, always an enjoyable time when we get to celebrate swearing ins with you guys. So, at this point, I'll pause the meeting so you guys don't have to stick around for the rest of it. If you guys want to go ahead and take off, and we'll just give you guys a couple minutes to get out of here. At this point, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Other questions from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. I have a first from Councilor Norris, a second from Councilor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is requests to speak on agenda item. Any mayor, are there any requests to speak?
No, there are not.
All right, moving on to old business. We have no items of old business, so the first item of new business, the Boy Scouts picked a really good meeting to come to. First item of new business is the consideration of a right-of-way vacation. This is Holiday Farms. This is a first reading, this is ordinance 2025-16, and we have Roger Kilmer, Senior Planner, Planning and Building, to present. Good evening, Roger.
Good evening. Name is Roger Kilmer, Senior Planner for the town. Item before you for consideration at this time is requested vacation of a public right-of-way, specifically part of Marketplace Drive, which is up in Holiday Farms. A petition for the vacation of this was filed on behalf of Fox Lane Homes and has gone through the appropriate review and public notice. To give you a little bit of background, first of all, I'm going to be briefly introducing the request tonight, and then I'll turn it over to the petitioner. To give you a little bit of background on what is being requested and where it is, on the screen in front of you is a copy of the recorded secondary plat of Holiday Farms, Section 7. More for the benefit of the public. The location of public ways and lots are established through the recording of secondary plats. And again, this is the recorded plat of Section 7. What is being requested is that part of the public way of Marketplace Drive, the area that I've highlighted in yellow, is being requested to be vacated, meaning essentially erased from the secondary plat. The petitioner is asking to do this to allow them greater flexibility in the future development of this portion of Holiday Farms. Vacating portions of a plat is a little bit of a unique process in that a plat, as mentioned earlier, establishes location of roads and public ways, but it also establishes lots. And the state legislature, through their process, has established essentially two different erasers to erase right-of-ways and lots, but they've given one eraser to the local jurisdiction or government jurisdictional body, which is yourselves. Your eraser is only allowed to erase public right-of-ways and easements. The second eraser is given to the planning commission, they are allowed to erase lots. So, what is before you tonight is basically the removal of the recorded right-of-way, this portion of right-of-way of Marketplace Drive that will, if approved, it will allow greater flexibility for the development. The developer then will need to go back before the planning commission to essentially erase the lot lines, therefore creating a blank canvas, which they then, as we've been told, are intending to develop townhomes on this portion. The roadway that would be running through that development would then be most likely a private drive, not a public drive, but a private one. And again, the property would be then replatted for a development of townhomes. To maybe give a little bit better perspective on where we are, again, the right-of-way to be vacated is outlined here in the white dots. The lots that will be vacated in the future are these that are outlined in red, so that eventually all of this area, again, would be a blank slate. For orientation purposes, this is Michigan Road. Right across the street is the Interactive Academy. Back behind this area is the residential section of Holiday Farms. And just to the north of this area is the commercial development of Holiday Farms, which is growing as we speak. So, with that, I'm going to pause and... So with that, I'm going to pause and turn it over to Kylie Bright Shuler from American Structure Point, representing the petitioner. And we'll allow Kylie to come up and answer any questions you might have.
Hey Roger, real quick before Kylie comes up there. You mentioned this is kind of a two-step process. I don't know that I've seen this come to us before like this. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I see, you know, it seems like it makes sense. My question is, are we getting the cart before the horse or should it go to the planning commission first? Or is this the right first step?
Excellent question. The state legislature in establishing those two erasers that I mentioned, in that it also establishes the process that if both portions are needed for vacation, the part before you has to go first.
Okay.
And we have done this before on another section of Holiday Farms. It was a number of years ago. But we, this is the second time we're doing that for a portion of Holiday Farms.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Doug Kelly, I'm with Fox Lane Homes, a petitioner here with Kylie from Structure Point. And I'll be able to speak to more of the, from the home builder side and the development side and also if there's any technical questions or any, anything from that aspect, Kylie will be here to answer them for you as well. As you said, we plan on developing the neighborhood. We're going to be putting some high-end, 32-foot wide townhomes, two-story. We're currently building in Holiday Farms. We feel that there's a need for a luxury, higher-end, low-maintenance part of the neighborhood. So the homes that we will be planning on doing with this approval would be more of a luxury, high-end, first-floor owner's bedroom. You know, the snowbird type, who want to live in the luxury style of Holiday Farms. We plan on continuing, you know, how beautiful it is already and continuing that into this section as well. But with this, hopefully with this approval, you know, we'll continue. This is the first step in our site plan process. We've thrown some designs out there and everything, but we need to obviously go ahead with this first, so.
Hey, thanks Doug. I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Obviously, you know, I'm not opposed to putting the townhomes there and I believe there's a, there's a need in the community for that. The change, though, is away from what was, what was initially planned. Was that commercial?
Yes.
So a concern I have is, you know, tax revenue on commercial property as opposed to townhomes is a loss of revenue to the town if we make this change. The second question I have is, is it, this is, this is obviously a public drive kind of heading through there. When we initially pictured this as kind of a commercial center, the idea was, you know, you'd have a couple of different entry points in and out to the commercial section. You're asking to remove the drive up to Rogers. Is that going to, how will people access the new townhomes if there's no drive going through them? I'm just trying to mentally picture this.
Yeah, so currently there's the, there's a paved road there currently, which is, I guess, I would consider the northern part of the subdivision that's currently installed. So the entrance to there would be in that northern entrance and then they would head south to a entrance that we would create for that section of the neighborhood.
You'd be putting in something?
Correct.
A different road?
Yes, right off of Rogers Highway, Rogers Parkway.
The other question I had, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer to someone else, and I wish I could remember, and Evan, you may even know. Probably a year ago, we had a conversation about kind of re-crafting the pathway through the space. Originally, I think it was supposed to be along 421. Now admittedly, there is a new pathway being built on the east side of 421, thank goodness. But is this also, if we vacate this, is this not part of what was considered the pathway trail compromise to move from along 421 through what I thought was the commercial area?
No, part of this is that we're going to continue the trail throughout the neighborhood to connect to the northern part where it was going to connect to before.
And I can help you with that. That trail vacation, I believe, was up towards the Garant Tacos site, which was up near the old farmhouse, which is not even exhibited on this.
Okay, north of Rogers.
Yeah, way north. It's not even on this.
So this doesn't impact that at all?
No.
I always wondered the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
At least that's my understanding. I'm looking at Brad Hinky, he's giving me the thumbs up.
My question's for, I think, Roger, real quick. Roger, sorry, are we getting rid, we're getting rid of right-of-way? Are we getting rid of entrance to Michigan Road? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
This area, this entry onto Michigan Road, it will be vacated. And again, what they are proposing is at some point off of Rogers, they'll have a private road coming down into their development, but it is not anticipated to come out and tie onto Michigan Road. So the two points of access from the commercial section of Holiday Farms onto Michigan Road will be here at Rogers Parkway. And then further north, it is just off of this map, unfortunately, that is already existing and that is up closer to the Starbucks and the Kitty Academy up to the north.
So is there only one access into this property at this point? That's the future plan?
Into the residential portion that they are proposing. There will be one point of access and it would be coming off of, off of this area.
I guess, I guess in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about fire protection and access and I assume that all that stuff will be crossed and dotted through that process. I think initially, I'm, I'm okay with this and I'm glad that we're getting off of Michigan Road, another access. I think that's, that's my main concern is that. However, it'd almost be in the future if we could see a plan at the same time we're getting rid of something, which I don't know if that's, that's not the process, but it'd make us more comfortable to be like, let's move on. So I think, I think that's what I'd like to see in the future if we can. But, but yeah, this looks like a great compromise as we move forward.
With this, you know, per zoning, we're able to do 12 units per acre. We're going to be far, far below that. We're going to be probably the 60% since we're, you know, we chose to do a wider unit as opposed to a narrow unit and go up. We chose to do a wider.
30 feet, you said?
32 feet.
32?
Yeah. So we're able to fit that first-floor primary bedroom on there and have an option to do second floor or first floor, so.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one que, oh, go ahead, Roger.
If I can, just to reemphasize and clearly respond to your question about fire concerns and things like that, their proposed development will still be required to go through planning commission, not only for the replating, but also for the development plan. So all of the different utility agencies and town departments and everything will still be reviewing it just as if it's a brand-new project. So everyone will be looking at this project.
Thank you very much.
So yeah, just a quick question. So if I'm looking at this correctly, the townhomes would be located on lots I, J, and K, and then those on HJ, HG, and F. Is everything north of Rogers Parkway still going to be commercial development?
Brad Hinky, Hinky Development Group, 1310 South US 421. To your question, that is correct. Everything north would be commercial and really kind of the quaint marketplace village there. We have a, you've probably already seen, but a dental group getting ready to go and then we have some other shops in addition to the Garant Tacos building that, that would all be north of this.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
I just have a procedural question, Roger. The, do we, will we need to amend the Holiday Farms PUD for this?
No. The proposed uses, first of all, dealing with uses. The proposed uses are permitted in this area of Holiday Farms. The layout that was within the Holiday Farms PUD was a conceptual layout which still greatly reflects what is currently platted and what will be platted. There is enough area for play to allow that. Again, the conceptual plan of the Holiday Farms did not nail down a specific site plan. It laid the things out in general, in a general format. And what is being proposed would be compliant with that general layout.
And then, and then what if, for whatever reason, the planning commission doesn't approve their part of it? What happens then?
Well.
And again, I, I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to get, I know the development plan will have to go through the planning commission, that will all ultimately be vetted that way. But procedurally, I just want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing here.
The, there are essentially three things that will have to be approved for their proposed development. One is the vacation of this right-of-way. Two will be the vacation and replating of the, of the property for their proposed development. And the third item is the development plan approval by the planning commission. Those, those last two steps, both by the planning commission, are essentially ministerial, meaning if they meet all of the standards that are spelled out within the Holiday Farms PUD and the Zinesville zoning ordinance, the planning commission has to approve those.
Perfect, thank you.
So that then gets me thinking, if it's ministerial, are we taking away the public voice?
No, there, there will still be public hearings held on those. Just, just as any development plan that comes before the planning commission now is still going to receive a public hearing. Any primary plat or plat amendment that comes before the planning commission, it is going to be required to have a public hearing. So those, those processes are still in place.
How advertised was this in the Holiday Farms community? That this was changing from commercial to townhomes?
It's always.
It's always been townhomes?
Well, it's always been, it's always been an approved use and it's kind of a bigger question for the neighborhood. It's always been an approved use. Do you mean how much was this vacation easement?
Yeah.
Published?
Do people know this is happening?
Per notice.
So they had to have the Lebanon Reporter?
It was published in the Lebanon Reporter. And for vacations, only property owners that own property touching the area to be vacated have to be notified. In this case, the landowner that touches the entire portion of the area to be notified is Hinky Development. So there were no other outside property owners required to be notified if there was any additional notification published or made available to residents of Holiday Farms. I'd have to let Mr. Hinky respond to that.
I can just elaborate on that. We, we don't have all the plans of the development, as Doug mentioned, but we have met with a number of the families there on that west side on all the uses in the marketplace, as well as landscaping, working with all of them on evergreens down through that area, like mostly north of the pond in that area. But we've met with all of them, we've talked through townhomes as a use in that area as well.
I just, I, I think there's been a lot of pushback in our community about like PUDs and the changes that are made post-approval. And I just want to make sure we go through as many congenial steps as we can just so people don't feel hoodwinked, I don't know.
My comment to yours is that this is a right-of-way, so.
Yeah.
We're getting rid of the right-of-way. The development plan that they bring is still going to go through a process and get crossed and dotted as it moves through.
Yeah, I agree with that, except that it, I mean, to his point, it could become ministerial and it just, it has to be approved once we, we let the first domino fall. So it's just that moment.
The only, Roger, correct me, the only two ways you amend a PUD is if you change the uses or you substantially deviate from the original PUD, correct?
And if you do either of those, you essentially have to go back through a rezoning of changing a PUD to a new PUD because you're going to be changing uses or changing development standards, things like that. This change does not rise to that requirement.
Is there like a number, a percentage of change? Is it, what is the non-subjective measurement of substantial change in a PUD?
That's a legal question.
Okay. Is there, is there a box that flags something for substantial versus not substantial?
I think the statute might say it's in the discretion of the planning director. Am I cor, am I correct?
I am not an attorney, so I'm going to defer.
Yeah, I mean, I think anytime you're trying to develop, if you're changing, if you're changing anything like zoning, you're going to have to go back through the planning commission. If you're changing the original intent or use of the property, you're going to have to go back through the planning commission. So there's always going to be some steps, but this is, if this is already an approved use.
Right.
It's just, what are they doing with the property?
It's just maybe more for future as we consider PUDs, what would be a measurement that if we're pushing to have more commercial in our town and we're presented with what would be commercial and it flips to residential, is two different revenue stream from the tax base. But also, it might not necessarily be approved by a governing body if, if it's too much of a change. That's all. I'm just trying to define too much of a change. Just from what I've had pushback from constituents. I'm not opposed to this, but I do want people to know that we are considering this so that we can maybe firm up those feelings of, once you have a PUD, you're willy-nilly able to do whatever you want. Because I think PUDs are a good tool in our town. But I want the community to understand that as well.
I will say, and I'm not speaking on behalf of all the residents of the neighborhood, but I will say that the change or the, the original scope of this being commercial, and Mr. Hinky can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the general desire to have townhomes in this location is much more desirable to these neighbors directly to the west than it would be the commercial uses to the west. So, I mean, obviously, no one's here to speak on that, but I think that's the general sentiment in the neighborhood.
Well, just in the last thing we considered, some of the pushback was we, the townhomes just a half mile away, that people didn't want townhomes. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're representing the people on both sides. But no one's here, so I'm just more saying for the future people who bring PUDs also.
Were they townhomes or apartments?
Well, I mean, I think, I think the, in an effort to kind of rein this in a little bit again, we're focused on the right-of-way vacation. The development plan will be presented to the planning commission. All this stuff will have opportunity for remonstration, communication, support, et cetera, et cetera. So I just, I think the, all, all great questions and really good dialogue, especially given this, the complexity of this, complexities of this area. I think just to kind of rein it back in, though, I think we're focusing on the right-of-way vacation. And then we'll get, obviously, as the development plan's approved and it comes back through the planning commission, ultimately, you know, that stuff will come to us too and we'll have a chance to look at it and.
If this is a living space, though, do we have to have a pathway behind it to go with what we normally require? Or is the pathway in front of it not, is that all we needed? Because we had to give that up in the north side, as you said. We had to say they didn't have to have a perimeter that they could go in front of and around. But now we're not addressing that? That comes at a different time?
If I may, just talk very briefly about the history of the pathway as it applied to Holiday Farms. Initially, the, the plan was a requirement of any subdivision is to have public pathway along the perimeter of the subdivision. So when Holiday Farms came in for its approval, the thought was, well, we're going to have a pathway along Michigan Road because that's the perimeter. Through the process, it was requested by, by the development team and approved by the town that through this, I'm going to refer to it as the commercial portion of Holiday Farms, that the pathway was going to be allowed to divert away from being right next to Michigan Road and move through the commercial section along Marketplace Drive. Obviously, now we're vacating, the request is to vacate a portion of Marketplace Drive. So now we're reverting back, reverting back to, okay, we need to still resolve the required pathway. There will be one. And part of their proposal through the development plan and replating will be the relocation where the pathway was going to follow this area. It will obviously now no longer follow that, but it will come along Michigan Road and then branch off and go through the commercial portion of.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that was clear, that we're right back to where we have a sidewalk over there on Michigan Road. Because otherwise, the town is going to be stuck putting a sidewalk there before we know it.
No, we will, the end result will be a recreation path all along the, you mentioned the east side of Michigan Road. The end result of this will be a continual path along the west side.
The west side, yes.
It just might not be right immediately next to Michigan Road. It might be still going through the commercial portion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't vacating that right-of-way perimeter path when we vacate this right-of-way. Okay, great.
Well, we technically are, that was my question, my first question. They may re, replace it in a later time, but they are in fact, this is where the, where the path is currently laid out.
Yes, and they will be required to, to replace it. Yes, and they will be required to replace it elsewhere, and that will be part of the approval process through the Plan Commission.
I think that's just why I wanted to make sure, is that by vacating this, I'm not vacating the future part. So I'm good.
You're not, you're not vacating the right to get, to get that, we're vacating the location of it, but we are going to get that pathway.
Okay. Yes. Just one question. I mean, obviously, I think the, the primary change is to net more square footage by vacating the right-of-way, which is the Marketplace Drive. How much more square footage do you gain for development by vacating this?
I don't necessarily think it's going to be more square footage overall, I think it's just going to allow us more flexibility and create a more aesthetic neighborhood while meeting the guidelines of the current zoning itself.
So it's not necessarily to put more, quote, 12 units per acre, it's not to add more acres?
No, 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 no. We're going to be more probably the seven units an acre, most likely, is kind of just our quick math going through it all, so we'll be well, well below the 12 units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from councilors? This is a public hearing, I have approved publication of public hearing, at this point I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who would like to comment, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. At this point, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-16.
Second.
First from Councilor Melton, the second from Councilor Stein. Are those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. President, if I may, should we vacate, or, what am I saying? Suspend the rules on this one and go ahead and approve this on final reading?
Is there a timeframe you guys are up against? Would it be beneficial to suspend the rules and approve it tonight, or does that matter to you guys?
So you don't have to come back in two weeks?
Sure.
You're like, yes.
I don't know that I would support it, just because I, I don't know how the public feels about it, and two more weeks may give me a better sense if there's, maybe there's remonstrant, maybe there's not, but I don't see a need to push it through right now.
All right, fair enough.
Well...
You have to have all a unanimous vote to suspend the rules.
It's got to be unanimous, so...
Well, it sounds like Brad, I'm not going to get your vote tonight.
It's his district.
All right, thank you very much. See you guys in a couple weeks.
Sorry.
All right, up next on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance regarding right-of-way consent to encroach. This is a first reading, ordinance 2025-17. We have Lance Lance, Director of DPW here, and I believe Heather, you've got some commentary you can provide on this as well.
I believe you did receive a late version, as this would have been bouncing back and forth between attorneys, so I'll let somebody else in the room speak to any tweaking that may have happened in the 11th hour. But before you, tonight, for an introduction and consideration on first reading, is a new section of the Code of Ordinances, specific, specific to encroachments into and upon the public rights of way. Now, these are not easements, we've done a lot with utility easements and drainage easements, this is the rights of way, this is the property alongside roads, sidewalks, et cetera, that the town owns and maintains. Now, we have long had an encroachment process in our Code of Ordinances, but it was oddly specific to trees and flora, and it was in chapter 100 of the Code of Ordinances. And so, right or wrong, through the years, the town has used that section of the code specific to trees and flora, to apply to any and other sundry needs across the town for right-of-way encroachments when odd, odd things cropped up. So essentially, this ordinance says, anything that you do upon the property that this body governs, governs, are right-of-way, requires the authorization approval of the town, and we thought that while we are embroiled in these conversations of updating the outdoor dining regulations currently under the BZA's auspices, to an encroachment process more accurately or appropriately awarded through the Town Council and the DPW as your agent in the field, we thought we cracked this section of the code, because we frankly never had this other than for trees. So the first section speaks mostly to the permanent encroachments in a right-of-way. These are really far and few between, it's not often that you have building-type extensions that are in the right-of-way, but we are seeing now in some subdivisions, there's a, there's more and more interest in them providing their own private flock cameras and radar feedback signs, so anything that's going to be put in the public right-of-way that's not going to be tasked to the town to maintain, it's not going to be our liability, we're not going to be responsible for it if it's damaged, we want to have these encroachment processes to recognize that. The second section speaks more to commonly encountered encroachments that we deal with more on a daily basis, which is things such as pods, dumpsters in the spring, in many, the village in particular, and many subdivisions that have small lots, people don't have a room, they don't have room to put a dumpster in their driveway if they're working on their house, they don't have room to take a dump truck worth of mulch they want to spread in the spring. So we want to offer these opportunities to our public, but we want to make sure that we're aware and regulating them, so they know where they are and that everything's being done properly. This would also be the encroachment process, once we bring the outdoor dining within right-of-way to fruition by removing that from the BZA, this will be the process that outdoor dining establishments will go through, so that we can review the area that they'd like to use, perhaps restrict it, all with the goal to make sure that ADA-accessible routes are maintained throughout our community. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this. This is the first reading only.
Heather, is there anything you want to add on that? Yeah, the only thing I was going to mention is, when we were talking about the outdoor dining, the council had a discussion about encroachments in the right-of-way, and some questions were raised, which prompted the review and then bringing forward this ordinance, so this is something really that you all got started for the town, and the only changes were, you got a draft version, so we just gave you the clean copy, and we had clarified a process for when the town can recoup their cost, if they have to remove something from the right-of-way after 24 hours, so that we can give written notice, and then we can remove the obstruction, but if necessary, recoup costs. So if there's something expensive, took extra labor, we should be able to recoup those costs, so, and that's allowed under the statute. And that's it.
Is 24 hours the normal time for someone to respond, or...
Yeah, we felt like that wasn't temporary, so if you're doing mulch for the day, great, if you're parking a dumpster there, and you haven't gone through a process to allow it to be, you know, there is a process, the town is going, so you can go have a conversation, but if you're doing it without permission, we felt like that was reasonable and pretty consistent.
I was just thinking, like, a weekend of mulch would maybe be 48 hours, so that's...
Yeah, if it's not, if we're aware of it, we can say, put it here, and you're okay, and you need it there for three or four days, we get it, you're spreading your mulch, not, you know, not an issue, this isn't really, you know, a policing action that we're seeking. And to Ms. Harris's point, these pods and dumpsters, they require before they drop stuff, anybody who puts stuff on the road, they want to know the town says it's okay, and we have this very unofficial email, yeah, I think it's okay, go for it, you know, it's a little more structured than that, but that's, in essence, all it is. So this allows us to develop our own unique forms for each specific use that's being requested, so that we can give the dumpster companies, the pod companies, the landscape, yep, you're good to go, here's your, here's your proof that they've asked for.
Is there any cost to getting the permission?
There is currently a $65 right-of-way encroachment fee in the fee schedule that is charged by the Planning and Building Department.
Lance?
Oh, I'm so sorry, just...
Go ahead, I didn't really...
But if they did it for 24 hours, like mulch, they don't have to come get a $65 permission?
Well, the way the ordinance reads right now, that $65 fee does not discriminate, it is for a right-of-way encroachment. So I think, you know, we're not out to make any money, folks, we just love to sell permits, right? We're not out to grab 65 bucks from everybody, and I could see that that might be, become onerous, so I have no problem working with the Planning Department to see if they want to reduce that fee a little bit, just to cover a little bit of our time.
I would think that would be okay, if we looked into that.
I was just going to point out, the other thing about giving notice, I mean, to the town, is then if there's like planned construction or some kind of improvements the town is doing, you can coordinate, so you want to make sure people are aware of it.
Right.
My question was about letter B on here, says, toward the end it says, "Where necessary to protect the public in nighttime lighted amber lamps, suitable reflective markers shall be placed around such materials." First question, is that the town supplying those, or is that the, the private person pulling the permit, or, I'm sorry, pulling the encroachment request, I guess?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's the first part. Basically, I'm worried about us saying it's okay to throw something in the street and then somebody hitting it, and we're not really governing cones, or we're not even requiring cones, we're not requiring, you know, barricades or anything, we're, you know, we're just saying, hey, you can put it there, but you might have to put a reflective marker on it or a lighted amber lamp, so, I don't know, I was just, I was just thinking, I've put stuff in the street, I've put some stuff in, if it can happen, it will happen, is all I got to say about that, but we've dumped gravel in the street one time, and, you know, a car ended up on top of it, it happens.
That's precisely why that language is in here, so that we have the right to require nighttime demarcation of what they have...
So even daytime, though, I guess, like, no cones, no barricades, or anything like that, just...
Well, typically, a reflective cone is what's used, and those are, meet both daytime and nighttime visibility requirements, and sometimes dumpsters come with their own reflectors on them, too, so...
That's true, yeah, okay. I just want to...
And pods as well.
I do think it is the intent there, though, that it's the individual that's asking for the permission that's putting that.
Correct.
And so I, I do think, to your point, we can clarify that in that section a little bit, I'll work with John Oberlander, so we can just say, the town may require...
And would that be, I mean, would that be on the permit, though? Is this a permit? Because we're giving permission, right? So...
This is a permit of sorts, it's a, it's a right-of-way encroachment affidavit, and acknowledge, we call it, I call it an acknowledgement.
And you'll put this information on that?
And one of the nice things about this, as I mentioned, this gives us the latitude, when you don't include a form in the actual ordinance itself, we can create our own forms, and I will say, by practice, ever since I've been here, and we've been having people ask if they could put stuff in front of their house in the street for a while, it has been our practice for years to require them to provide some type of reflective marker on the corners.
For second reading, we'll offer a little clarification, just to make sure that it's clear, it's the individual that's requested the permit.
Not the town. Yeah, great, thank you.
Got it.
Any other questions from councilors, for Lance or Heather? I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-17.
Second.
I have a second from Councilor Melton, are those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Evan, if you'd like to suspend the rules.
No, I'm not, no, this one, I want some public input on this.
That's funny. Up next are other matters, are there any other matters from councilors? I would just reiterate the appreciation to Mr. Palau, it's my understanding that he literally just wrapped up autographs. That's pretty impressive, so...
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second from Councilor Norris, are those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. The next regular Town Council meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 21, 2025, at 7:30 a.m. in the Zionsville Town Hall Council chambers, final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you.